Welcome to August 13th Planning Commission meeting. This time, I'd like to get the meeting started with a flag salute. Larry, would you do the honors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, we'll do our roll call.
Mr. Setterson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Crabbe?
Absent.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Brenton?
Absent.
Mr. Denial?
Here.
Looks like we have a forum. We'll go into our report from the Planning Director. Michael, good to see you.
I wanted to be sure you had a full crowd here this morning. Wanted to update you on a couple of items that have proceeded up to the Board that were considered by your commission. At the July 21st Board hearing up at Lake Tahoe, the Board unanimously approved the zoning text amendment for the removal of snow equipment. There were many people who came up and spoke on that issue, but the amendments as proposed by the commission moved forward and were adopted. At that same meeting, the Board also approved a zoning text amendment as it related to affordable housing density bonuses for the redevelopment areas up at Lake Tahoe. Last Tuesday, at the Board's meeting, the appeal for America's Tire Company came back. The applicant, as directed by the Board, revised the project and showed that the project could not proceed forward as based upon the modifications required by the Board. The Board was satisfied that it was not a viable project, and based upon the applicant's proposed redesign, they denied the appeal and allowed the project, as approved by your commission, to move forward. And just to make you aware, at your September 10th meeting, we have a proposed zoning text amendment dealing with emergency and transitional shelters. This continues the staff's and county's implementation of the recently adopted housing element. Any questions or comments?
No, looks like none.
Thank you very much.
At this time, I'll open it up to public comment, but it has to be comment on anything you want other than anything that is before the commission today. So if there's anyone out there that would like to speak to the commission, now's your chance. Okay, seeing no one, close that off, and we'll go to our first item, subdivision modification variance.
Thank you, Chairman Denial. The Development Review Committee recommends that the Planning Commission continue this item to the September 10th Planning Commission hearing. And Attachment A is from the applicant, who is currently overseas and has attached the email regarding some health concerns. So we are requesting that it be continued to September 10th. If possible, the first item.
Okay. Kathy, do we?
At 10:05.
10:05?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion? Second, all those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Then, actually, we're right on time. We'll go ahead to our second item, but before we start, how many people out here want to speak to this item? Okay. You're exempt, EJ. You don't have to. Okay, if you can keep it to just a couple of minutes so we can get through this, because we did hear extensively, not yet. First, I have to let the planner present it.
Oh, I was going to make this.
When I say public, can speak, and you guys.
I would just remind the commission that a lot of people came a long ways to be here for this thing, and this setting of the future state is all going well, but it's a real imposition of.
Yeah. That's why I want to try to get everybody the opportunity to speak, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Make it short and quick. Okay, with that, EJ?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission. This item being presented today is Enclave at Granite Bay Project. This item was considered at the July 9th Planning Commission meeting and was continued to today's meeting with the direction that staff provide the commission with a complete project package, which would include findings for both approval and denial, and also conditions of approval. With that direction, we have included such findings and conditions in your agenda packet. I do want to familiarize those in attendance today with the project, so I will provide a brief overview of the project, and then also update the commission on a recent change to the project since the last Planning Commission meeting. So with that, I'll go into the PowerPoint presentation. This project site comprises 12 acres and is located on the north side of Elmhurst Drive at the intersection of Swan Lake Drive and the Granite Bay area. The project site is situated just east of the Ridgeview Elementary and Oak Hill Schools, which are right over in this area. There are rural low-density residential uses to the west, north, and east of the project, down in this area, up to the north, and then, of course, over along Pastor Drive. And then, Elmhurst Drive and Linda Creek Court border the project site to the south, right along in this area. And then you have the existing tree lake development down below the project site. The Enclave at Granite Bay Project is a proposal to subdivide a 12-acre infill site into a 27-lot planned development for residents that are age 55 and older. The requested entitlements include a general plan amendment, a rezone, a vesting tentative subdivision map, conditional use permit, and a tree permit to remove the two landmark cottonwood trees. The Granite Bay Community Plan land use designation is proposed to be changed from rural residential, which has a 2.3 to 4.6 acre minimum, and rural low-density residential, which is 0.9 to 2.3 acre minimum, to the new land use of low-density residential, which is 0.4 to 0.9 acres per dwelling unit. The property is also proposed to be rezoned from RAB 100, which has 2.3 acre minimum lot sizes, to RSAGBX with a 17,424 square foot lot size minimum with a PD designation of 2.6, which allows the smaller lot sizes. This change in land use would allow the density on-site to be increased from a potential of six residential units to 27 residential units. The applicant has designed the project to comply with the county's planned development ordinance. The proposed 27 lots would range an area from 5,355 square feet to 11,407 square feet. The residences would be limited to single-story and would not exceed 2,600 square feet in size, with a maximum lot coverage of 40 percent. Approximately 50.4 percent of the project site, which is about 6.08 acres, is now proposed to be set aside in open space and common area lots for wetlands preservation, recreation facilities, pedestrian trails, detention basin, and landscaping. Primary access to the site would be at Swan Lake Drive at the intersection of Elmhurst Drive, which is right down in this area. Then there would also be a 40-foot wide emergency vehicle access and utility easement with a 20-foot all-weather surface emergency roadway that would be provided to Skyview Lane, a private street to the north. I think everybody's familiar where that is up here. As far as the environmental document for the project, a mitigated negative declaration has been prepared, and although this analysis determined that the project could result in potentially significant impacts, all impacts were found to be mitigated to a level of less than significance. So as far as changes that have occurred since the last meeting, the one noted change is in regards to the planned development calculation for the project. As you know, with a PD, there's a mathematical formula that is used to come up with the maximum allowed units. And in the original staff report that you had at the last meeting, it was mentioned that the density increase awarded to the project for providing 49 percent open space would permit a maximum of only 26.8 units. And to achieve 27 lots as proposed, there would have to be, one, a minor reduction in some of the lot sizes and slight increase in the open space provided, or, two, losing one of the residential lots. At the time that we wrote the staff report, the applicant submitted a letter requesting the change of proposal to reflect 26 lots. That would fix the PD calculation. However, in the last week, they decided that they could still provide 27 lots and meet the PD ordinance requirements by slightly reducing the lot sizes and providing even more open space at 6.08 acres. There are some lots that are larger than the 5,500 square foot lots, or the smallest, which is 5,355, so they would be able to reduce those and gain the open space. This change would be consistent with the planned development ordinance and the low-density residential land use designation in the Granite Bay Community Plan. As mentioned at the previous hearing, the Granite Bay Municipal Advisory Council reviewed this proposal at their May 3rd, 2009 meeting and voted unanimously with a 7-0 vote to recommend denial of the project. So with that, based on previous direction from the Planning Commission, the Development Review Committee is recommending that the Planning Commission take one of two actions today in consideration of the project. The first one is adopt the mitigated negative declaration and approve the vesting tentative subdivision map, conditional use permit, and tree permit, and recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the applicant's request for a general plan amendment and rezone. This would be based on the findings and recommended conditions of approval and mitigation monitoring program in Attachments 2 through 4 in the packet that you have today. The second option is to recommend to the Board of Supervisors denial of the applicant's request for a general plan amendment, rezone, vesting tentative subdivision map, conditional use permit, and tree permit, based on the findings in Attachment 5. Whatever action is decided today, I will need to make note of just some minor corrections and the findings and conditions of approval based on the latest changes to the PD calculation. So that concludes my report. I'm going to be available for questions. Just let me know how you would like to proceed.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay, it looks like, right now, you're fine. Okay, would the applicant or the representative like to speak at this time?
Good morning, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Camille Courtney. I represent the Pastor family. In light of our last meeting, where we really went through most of the details of the development, unless you have some specific questions for me, I'll think I'll truncate most of my comments. We have a few brief comments to make, and then allow the residents that have come up to express their concerns, thoughts, questions, and then we'll answer any of those questions unless there's some specific issues that you would like me to address. Is that okay with all of you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Last time, we heard a little bit about the nature of what we're proposing and the vision that we have for this development, and we've continued to reach out to experts in the industry about the change in demographics in the nation, the change in demographics in Sacramento, and specifically Granite Bay. Jeff Demure spoke last time, and I just wanted to bring him back briefly to share some information that I think is important to consider, why we had this vision in the first place and where we'd like to go. And then after that, I will probably address some traffic concerns that I've heard. We didn't really spend a lot of time on traffic last time. And then subsequent to that, if there's any other questions that the commission has, then I will turn my time over to the residents, okay? So with that, let me introduce Jeff Demure.
Oh, yeah. That's great.
Thanks, Camille. Where are you, Chairman Denial, members of the commission? My name is Jeff Demure. I am an architect, and I spoke the last time, and I just wanted to reinforce some of the things and put a little bit finer point on what we believe is a significant component of the market that is mostly being unmet. Our firm, Jeffrey Demure and Associates, embarked upon a pro bono project with Escaton, a 41-year service provider in the older adult market in the Sacramento area. Escaton had this vision for how people can age in place, and we looked at the universal design principles that are in place, and we recognized that there really is nothing that embodies how you can bring these components of dignity, independence, and integration into an existing community without building something. So in this four years, we built a demonstration home, which is really a living museum in Roseville. I would invite anyone to go out and take a tour of this wonderful building, because what it does is it takes this notion that something that requires people that need assistance with activities of daily living, that they need to be in something that looks institutional. Well, we have gone to great research this and gone to great time and resources to make sure that this doesn't happen in the future. Now, fast forward to the market. Where are we at right now? Ninety percent of all baby boomers, according to a survey by AARP, say that they want to age in place. They want to stay in the communities. But when they can no longer maintain, or want to stay, or need to stay in that larger home, what are their alternatives? We are trying to provide an alternative with the solution for this livable design certification program that we have embarked upon. Next year, in America, there will be more than 10 or 40 million, more than 40 million Americans over the age of 65. That doesn't even include the 55-year-olds. And with 20 percent of the population in America being in California, you can see how significant that number is. So what we're, the other startling statistic, in my opinion, is that within the next 10 years, there will be more than 50 percent of Americans that will be over the age of 65. So clearly, people want to be able to stay in their neighborhoods. They want to have a sense of connection with the things that they know, the things they love, shopping, churches, friends, and recreation. We believe that this site lends itself extremely well to this aging in place and living in place component. Relative to the site itself, what we've tried to bring in is this new town planning with eyes on the street. This creates a sense of connection within the site itself, so it's walkable within the neighborhood from one side of the neighborhood to the other side of the neighborhood, so you can walk to school. With a greater number of homes, it allows for more eyes on the street. We don't think that there's a better community building component than having people that are in their homes most of the day that can look out and see the activities that are occurring around them. So we believe that this is another benefit. The other benefit that we'd like to point out is relative to single older adults, this creates somewhat of an enclave for them to be with friends and to be with others that they've lived with. So the folks that we see moving into this neighborhood are residents that are in Granite Bay right now. They don't have much of an alternative, and so we're trying to provide one with dignity, with elegance, with sophistication, the right size in the right place. We'll be around for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was just thinking, as I was listening to Jeff, I think it's important here that, especially in these challenging economic times, that we have a proposal before you that really is visionary, and it could lend itself to something that the community is very proud of and is a landmark. And I think it's also important that the owner and the developer is a resident of this very same community. The Pastor family, as you've heard before, has been in this community for a very, very long time, and they are the builders. And so we really, you saw from the architecture that we're proposing, we've made every effort to bring to you a concept that has sound planning principles and would be architecturally outstanding. There's no doubt in my mind, it would be well-received from the standpoint of sales. I wanted to spend just a little bit of time on traffic. I know that that continues to be a concern that I've heard, and I'm sure that you've heard. We didn't really dwell on that a lot this last time, and I just wanted to make certain that you all understood that the traffic analysis that was done by MRO Engineering was reviewed by the county staff. And I think Rebecca, not to put you on the spot, but were there any concerns, questions, anything out of the ordinary from the traffic analysis? Did they use standard principles or approaches to the traffic analysis? And was there anything in the traffic report that was inconsistent with the general plan guidelines in the community plan with respect to level of service C, changes in intersections, any of that kind of thing?
The applicant went ahead and provided one. We agreed with it.
Because of the number of homes that we're developing, 27, is so insignificant in the great scheme of things in terms of traffic generation, it's normally not required. But we knew it would be an issue, because it's an infill development where you have people already in the community. And so just briefly, because you'll hear, I'm sure, lots of other things today, and I just wanted to bring us back to the facts, because that's all I can deal with, is the facts, that the traffic analysis that was done presumes an age-restricted community. That's obviously key. If it were not age-restricted, traffic would be much greater. These numbers are based upon traffic engineering standards that are used throughout the nation. They're not debated. They're based upon actual studies that have been done, thousands and thousands. So with our age-restricted development of 27 dwelling units, we would produce 100 more trips a day than are there right now. If the site was left in the six dwelling units, it would have 57 trips, using the standard trip generation factors that the county always uses. Net difference of 43 trips in a day. When they look at traffic engineering, what is typically used as the key for impact is peak hour and AM hour, when there's the most people on the roads at a particular time. And as you know, in the general plan and the community plan for Granite Bay, they set a level of service they call C at key intersections. So all intersections to judge a project must operate at a level of C or greater. So the traffic engineers go to another step and look at, of these trips, how will they be distributed? Where will they go? And how many will go in the morning, and how many will go in the afternoon, peak hour? So in comparing what we're generating in the AM versus what is existing, you'll see a net difference of two trips in the morning hour, peak hour. In the afternoon, PM, peak, you'll see a net difference of one. Those are obviously very low numbers and insignificant. But then they go and look at the key intersections that this traffic will impact to determine if there is a change in level of service. And every intersection that they looked at, there was no change in level of service. Subsequent to the MAC meeting, we were asked to look at what would the impact be if we connected Pastor Court with Elmhurst and ran all the traffic from Pastor and the 21 homes in that community through the subdivision and out on Swan Lake as a worst-case scenario. Again, the level of service on any key intersections were unchanged. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because that's the work that has been done, and that's the thought that was put into the report. And as you heard from staff, there was never any question of the validity of that information. Are there any questions on that at all? Richard?
See, the question I've read in some of the correspondence deals with the, an age-restricted community, and I think the understanding would be that's generally over 55, or over 55 in age. But then the question is, how, over time, is that assured? Or how is it?
How is?
How can people get the sense that it's going to stay an age-restricted community, I guess is the question.
There's two things in effect. One is a state law, and the second is conditions, covenants, and restrictions, CCNRs. So should the county approve this development, the conditions of approval would require that the covenants, conditions, and restrictions that are developed, reviewed by county council, that are recorded on the land, that run with the land, require that one resident of the home always be 55. They cannot buy it without proving that, and that's consistent with state law. That will run with the land in perpetuity. They cannot change that. So if there was someone in that neighborhood that was not complying, they have to produce a birth certificate, a countering driver's license, proof of evidence of their age to go through escrow. So that's how that remains in effect.
So this is not something that could be changed, like by a homeowners' association?
No. They'd have to come back to Plaster County, file an application for a change in the subdivision, and go through this whole process to remove that requirement. And then, they would have to go to all 27 deeds that have already been recorded, and if there was mortgage lenders, and modify all those deeds. I've never seen it done in my career. Have you ever seen it done in mine? No, Scott? This is kind of council shaking, no?
Okay, thank you. The answer's my question.
Okay, because actually, that was a question I had, because I know in a lot of the correspondence they said, well, it was a ruse just to get high-density development on this parcel, and that if, prior to developing it, that it would change. And my assumption was that if it was approved, as, you know, as it's set to, then it could not be changed.
Absolutely not.
Yeah.
It's no more a ruse than 27 homes, or one story, or 50 percent open space. Conditions of approval are conditions of approval. Not to mention that if I sold you a home and represented that it was 55 and older and sold you a home and you weren't, who would be getting sued? It would be me. But it's state law, so.
Excuse me, by whom? sued by whom?
Excuse me. Let me finish, and then you'll be able to speak.
No questions. Everybody gets their opportunity to speak.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Commissioner Gray, was there another question?
Yes. The CCNRs that are written and included purchase of the property unless you're 55?
I think I want to turn your mic up a little bit.
Which one, top?
Oh, this one here.
Now you're on.
Is there also, within the CCNRs restrictions, for example, that you can't rent it out to somebody under 55, or you can't let your kids live there while you live somewhere else even though you bought it?
Yes. And that's part of the state law, actually. You can have someone there under the age for two weeks. That's the state law. Unless you petition the homeowners' association for a special, like someone's ill or sick or you're taking care of somebody. In other senior communities where we have worked and we have developed, it's a very onerous issue, and the state law limits you to two weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions on the traffic information that we just discussed? Okay? Great. Then at this point in time, I'm sure that there'll be some other questions that I can address later, but we'll turn it over to the public.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, now's the time for the public to speak, and, yeah, we did get that packet, but you're welcome to speak on it. So now's the time that you'd come up, and if you're representing the Granite Bay MAC, you could probably be the first one. Just state your name and your address, and I think, do we have a sign-up sheet?
We don't. We'll get an audio or.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Denial, and the other council members, commission members. My name is Virgil Anderson. I live at 7655 Memory Lane in Grand Bay, and I am currently the chairman of the MAC. I would like to just read for the record the letter, because it'll take less time than if I go expert and just speak on my own. The enclave of Grand Bay was presented to the Grand Bay MAC on multiple occasions over the past several years. Arguments have been heard for and against the project. The MAC heard issues ranging from increased traffic on residential streets to this being a poor location for a senior development. Most of these arguments against the project have been rebuffed by technical experts. There is an issue that has not been addressed and where a vocal group of the Grand Bay community have a reasonable disagreement. This is the issue of the project density. It's my understanding that the 12.07-acre parcel, our project, is zoned for six residences. This project is proposing 27 residences, almost four times, five times, the current allowable density. The Grand Bay MAC made a motion at their May meeting not to approve the project as proposed. The MAC members were unanimous in their vote of 7 to 0 against the project as presented. The density of the project seemed to be the most contested. It's my understanding that the applicant has requested a change in density with the Plaster County Planning Department. The Planning Department is currently reviewing this request, along with over 40 other requests in land use during the process that they are using to update the Grand Bay Community Plan. Staff recommends reviewing all land use changes at once to determine the effect of any one change may have on another and on the Granite Bay Plan as a whole. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bob Shulke. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Residents Defending Granite Bay, and I sent you a letter, which I hope you all had an opportunity to read. I'm a 30-year resident. I'm a 30-year resident of Granite Bay. My only motive for being involved in this thing is because I love and care about our community, and I think that we are on the cusp of violating the Granite Bay Community Plan, which is now under review. And such a violation is a, really does a great disservice to the people who live there, particularly the people in the neighborhood. But I live a long, long way. I live on Oaknold Drive, down by the lake. So, I have no axe to grind, except to say that this is the worst, the worst planning decision you could possibly make, in light of the fact that we already know that the county staff is against it. They've recommended denial. They've given you options, all of a sudden. I don't understand that. But originally, of course, there's options, accept it or deny it, but basically, the staff recommended denial. The MAC has recommended denial. Every community organization in Granite Bay recommends denial of this. And the people around the area are against it. We have 500 members now in Residents Defending Granite Bay. 500 people who are interested and have basically said, "We are against this project." Now, look, we can wait a while until the Granite Bay Community Plan is updated, then take a look at this whole project at that time. It's a wonderful opportunity to step back from this thing. But to put 27 homes on property that, or a parcel that was zoned for six homes, when everyone around the area was promised when they bought their homes that this would remain a low-density residential neighborhood, all of a sudden, we're going to high density. And this argument about this being a favorable thing for seniors is a bunch of bull, if I may use that vernacular. Because basically, they've got a lot of places they could go in Granite Bay without interfering or upsetting the general plan and the community plan. Now, I've outlined most of this in my letter. I hope that you people have had a chance to read it. I would point out to you that only Jeffrey Moss lives in Granite Bay. And you people are on the brink of playing god with the people's lives in Granite Bay, and you have no connection with it other than sitting on this commission. The planning, you're from different areas. I took the opportunity to look up where you're all from, and I love your neighborhoods. I love your area. Move this resident, this senior residential operation into your backyard. We have a saying in Granite Bay... (applause) We have a saying in Granite Bay, and it goes something like this. "Today, it's on our doorstep; tomorrow, it will be on yours." So, do the right thing for the people of the community, and deny this request. They asked for 52 homes a year ago. This is just an opportunity to, they reduced it now to 27. It's the same bull dressed in different clothing. That's a bad, I'm sorry, that's a bad analogy, isn't it? But by all means, give us a break down here. We've got a lot of other things going also that are a threat to the community. But what we're trying to do, bottom line, and then I'll sit down, we're trying to retain the sweetness and the character and the beauty of this wonderful, wonderful community. And we think that this piecemeal rezoning is a bad idea, and this particular project is a terrible land use change. So, I hope you will consider what I said, and I tell you from my heart that I'm here only because I care, and we need you, you folks. We need you to defend us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Just step right on up.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Jill Ernst, and I live at 9420 Swan Lake Drive. I should point out or mention that I was on the MAC. I served on the MAC from June of 2002 to December of 2008, so until very recently. I've never been on this end before, and it's very different how calm you can be when you're sitting up there and how nerve-wracking it is to be here. But I wanted to speak today about the history of the project, because I know that when a project comes before a board like this, it's very frustrating, because you have a developer who's put in a lot of time and effort and money. You have angry neighbors, which, there's always angry neighbors. No one wants a project in their backyard. And it's hard to know what to do. You don't want to send someone back to the drawing board. But my point is this. This project, as far as I know, and I talked with E.J. about it this morning, we were trying to remember, came in in its first iteration back in 2005. And I've heard the 52 houses floated. I don't recall that, but I do remember that it was 34 houses at the time. And I want to point out, I lived on the other side of Granite Bay at the time. And the 12-acre parcel, there were two different parcels, from the 12-acre parcel to the north that had not been built on yet. And I drove over there, and I looked at it, and I thought, you know, this looks like a pretty large parcel, but 34 homes, that's, you know, an awful lot to be putting in here. So, when the developer came in, what I advised, and I think that the minutes will bear out, what the MAC advised was that it was a drastic increase in density, and that the community would never support that high of an increase. They were told that years ago. They came in again as an informational item. And again, the density had dropped to 27 at that point, and they were showing bocce ball courts, and they were showing materials that they were going to use. And it was repeated, "The density is too high." And we tried to get that across, and the developer came in again, and the density was unchanged. And it was like, "Look, we've done all this and that, and we've got a need for senior housing," and it's right in front of them. "The density is too high." And at some point, you just say, "They don't want to hear that. They're not listening, and they're not going to listen." And that's when things became kind of contentious. I had, I moved over to Swan Lake Drive somewhere in the middle of this, and once I became familiar with the community, it caused me even greater concern. And one of the things I wanted to point out, if I might borrow this...
And I don't remember when this was, is this recently, or a month ago? Okay. I just want to show you a case. Well, are you all familiar with the site? Because I don't want to...
Yes. Right there.
This is a parcel. You know, here's the school. This traffic study... Oh, I'm sorry. The traffic study... Thank you. Let me get my notes. I mean, as the county has said, no traffic study was required. They did one out of, you know, their own volition. But what did the traffic study look at? It looked at Sierra College and East Roseville Parkway, which is down here. It looked at West Elmhurst and East Roseville Parkway, which is over here. And it looked at, which I should mention, by the way, that the backup is East Elmhurst and Roseville Parkway. This is not nearly as backed up as this side, which often goes, you know, back to here in the mornings. And the last thing it looked at was Barton and East Roseville Parkway. No one ever looked at Twin Schools and Elmhurst, which is what we're all concerned about. No one ever looked at Swan Lake Drive and Elmhurst, which is what we're concerned about. Thank you. Another thing, the factor that they used to reflect senior housing is ITE 251. And I've been reading a lot on traffic studies lately. And from what I understand, that's just a starting point. There's other factors that you have to consider. What's the average age of the community member? What's their access to cars? Because we're looking, that factor takes into account subsidized housing for people who don't have cars. What's their level of affluence? People who are affluent make more trips. It was also pointed out, part of that senior housing presumes that you're going to be walking to nearby facilities. There's no facilities nearby that seniors can walk to in this community.
Please, please, for time. You don't need to clap. Just listen, and so everybody gets...
The bottom line is, and I've said this before, the senior housing is not a need in Granite Bay is an excuse. And as Camille has said herself, if this was a regular community, the traffic would be huge. So, they use this factor and, you know, generate their numbers, and the trips don't look so bad. But for those of us who live there, who see the traffic, and my kids don't even go to that school. There's two elementary schools, and there's a park. And if you know Granite Bay, you know that we are sports crazy. We've got soccer. We've got baseball. We've got all kinds of stuff going on at Feis Park, year-round. And that's where all the traffic is, and that's where all the kids are. That's why we're so concerned. That's why people are here. I drove down from Tahoe this morning. That's why people are here when they could be at work, at 10 o'clock in the morning, because we are very concerned about the safety issues. And lastly, I just want to say that throughout this process, we were told that the developer lives in Granite Bay and is a good neighbor, and that they had the concerns of the community at heart, and that they'd done other projects in the past, and they wanted to be a good neighbor to the community. A good neighbor does not repeatedly ignore what the community says again and again at MAC meetings. That unanimous vote by the MAC was five new members. So, you've got quite a cross-section of people there. Not only those of us who served before, who left in 2008, these were five new members. At that meeting, Mr. Pastor stood up, and he made a very passionate plea for this project. And he said, "We lack vision, that we're missing the big picture." And he basically said, threatened, "There are worse things that could happen on this property." For example, he could put up a six-foot chain-link fence around the property. And indeed, three days, two or three days after that MAC decision, a six-foot chain-link eyesore of a fence is now around that property, keeping kids out from crossing over like they used to do. Those are not the actions of a good neighbor. So, that is all I have to say. Thank you so much. And who needs this?
Good morning. My name is Randy Pastor. I reside at 9819 Cranley Drive in Granite Bay. I've lived there for 16 years, in the Tree Lake Village subdivision. We're here this morning to talk about growth. Growth can be either good or bad. The growth of our federal budget deficit is considered bad growth, while the growth of our children, our salaries, our businesses, and our retirement accounts are all examples of good growth. The purpose of the general plan is to monitor and control growth, making sure the proposed growth meets certain goals and policies. I'd like to read a couple of examples out of the community plan for Granite Bay. Number one is the goal is to manage land as a resource, not as a commodity, so that its future use will be beneficial to the community. Establish and maintain a system of natural scenic paths, trails, and roads to connect local areas within the community to main paths, trails, and thoroughfares in adjoining areas. Some of the policies of the general plan are locate high and medium-density residential areas within existing developed community centers where urban services are most efficiently provided, and to encourage planned unit developments as a means of designing projects which best fit the natural landscape, and where the area and specific site lend themselves to planned unit developments. I believe this project not only meets but exceeds these goals and policies of the existing general plan. The project that's proposed by Pastor Land Development began in the mid-1980s with the development of 24 lots in the Tree Lake Village subdivision. Throughout the years that followed, changes and restrictions have been put in place for new development. Land use lines were drawn through the property using a creek instead of the property line. These changes have brought us before you today. Pastor Land Development Incorporated is a mother, seven brothers and sisters, who united together to develop property they have owned since the mid-1970s. The quality of their development is apparent on Elmhurst Drive. The homes built by them are of the highest-quality construction, maintaining and increasing surrounding property values. This project is an infill project connecting two higher-density master-planned developed communities together, The Woods and Tree Lake, excuse me, Tree Lake Village, by a high-density master-planned senior community. I believe it is the right of every neighbor to speak their mind and voice their opinion. But in the end, if 50 families are against this project, that leaves over 1,000 families in the Tree Lake Village area alone who join the silent majority in support of this project. This proposal is to welcome 27 new families to our community, a master-planned, smart-growth project we can be proud of, providing open spaces and trails that can be used by the community as a whole, not just six multimillion-dollar estates. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Marlene George, and I am a 14-year resident of Granite Bay. I also consider myself a technical expert on seniors. I know there was some discussion earlier about that there have been some technical experts testifying for the other side. Before I retired, I was a top social service manager in Sacramento County, working with seniors. And after I retired, I became the chair of the Placer County Commission on Aging. I'm here today to speak against the project, because I do not believe that it is in the seniors' best interest. It is not senior-friendly. The location is a primary reason. The location is very isolated. It is a long distance from public transportation and important services that seniors need for a good quality of life, such as a pharmacy, medical facility, a food market, and community center. The project is not an assisted-living facility, but for many of the individuals who will reside at the enclave, this will be the last residence that they live in before they reach the end of their life, or they have to be placed in assisted living. When senior adult communities are marketed, they're always marketed as active adult communities for 55 and older, and you see these billboards of seniors playing tennis and golf. But no one ever talks about the downside of aging, and that is what I'm here to bring to your attention today. As seniors age, and statistics show, and I could bring a PowerPoint presentation, but for the sake of sight and simplicity, I have just kind of like summarized my data for you, that seniors 60-plus have, on the average, and I know this is a shocking statistic, of six medical conditions at any one time: vision, arthritis, high blood pressure, high cholesterol. And as they age, these conditions become worse. Most emergency room visits are made by seniors. I recently took my mother to the emergency room. She's 93. She fell while visiting me. Just about everyone else there was a senior who fell. What happens to these seniors when they're no longer able to drive? For many seniors, as they age, they can no longer drive, or they have their driver's license revoked because they have been in accidents, driving recklessly, and have been cited. So, how will they get to a pharmacy? How will they do their shopping? How will they get to their medical appointments? There's no public transportation. This is a very isolated place. Also, there was some discussion today about this being a visionary project for seniors. This project, other than it being single-story, smaller square footage, has none of the hallmarks of traditional senior communities. There's not a community center. There's not an organized structure for seniors to interact socially. And what we know about seniors is that the keys to healthy aging is for them to not be isolated, to interact with others, to be engaged in their communities. And there's no formalized structure within this to have that happen. You've all heard of the turned shut-ins. That's what we're talking about. People who are shut in, who are seniors, who are isolated, their spouses have died, or their other family members have died, and they're alone. And so, social isolation and depression are very key issues. If Granite Bay does need a senior community, and it very well might, I don't know, the enclave is not the answer. Other than the project having one-story homes with limited square footage, nothing in the project is really senior-friendly. The rationale for the project is that Granite Bay residents want to downsize from their large homes and remain in Granite Bay. A real estate agent and I did a study from the ZIPCO data for Granite Bay that shows just under 1,000 homes in Granite Bay are one-story with just under 2,400 square feet. Currently, 75% of the homes for sale in Granite Bay are one-story with under 2,400 square feet, and this number has been consistent for quite a long time. This project only adds 27 homes to that mix. If a senior, I mean, I really want to stress this point. If a senior chooses to live in a home and downsize that is one-story and small, that is a personal choice. But I think when the county takes on the responsibility for making a decision to designate a senior community as a senior community, I think... a senior community as a senior community, I think that that project should meet a higher standard that considers the issues of aging, and this one has not. If you approve this project today, I think that Granite Bay will lose out on having a real senior community. And I think that if we do need one, I think the location of perhaps Auburn-Folsom Road and Douglas would be ideal. There's a pharmacy, there's public transportation, there's a medical facility plan for near that area, near Quarry Ponds. So I think that, and also, do we really want Granite Bay to be a senior community? Do we want to keep attracting? If this is approved and then another project comes, do we want Granite Bay to become a senior community? There's already declining enrollment in our schools that have already been built. And for those reasons, I would like for you to deny that project. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Erickson. Can I ask that the satellite map be brought up? I'd like to show you exactly where I live. I live right here, across the street from the school. I'm at 9819 Elmhurst Drive. I'd like to address three issues. The first is the process. I don't understand how the history of this project has transpired. How can the public have such vehement and overwhelming opposition? The MAC votes seven to zero unanimously. The planning department's own staff recommend denial of the request to rezone based on the current Granite Bay community plan, and then your body decide that you would like to have recommendations for approval from the planning department. This process places the current review of the plan under considerable suspicion and question. This project must be considered against our current community plan, not what you think it should be, or what you want it to be, but what it has been for the past 20-plus successful years. The second is traffic, and I know we've heard a lot about that. I'm no stranger to this issue, and I will tell you that I'm not the person that just stands up and complains about the traffic. I've been very active in affecting the traffic in my neighborhood. I started by going to the Granite Bay Safety Committee, which is part of the MAC, and soon became the co-chairperson of that committee. I went to the school board meetings and addressed traffic issues. I've worked with all school principals on the traffic problems since 2004. I organized walk-to-school events, including a week-long event involving the Sheriff's Department, the CHP, and the Fire Department. I was a member of the committee that developed the Placer County Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, and was told that a big reason why that program came into place was because of Elmhurst Drive, and that Elmhurst Drive would be the first roadway that would be addressed in the program. The problems continue to this day. We have volume issues, speeding issues, stop-sign running issues, the list goes on. This is not the applicant's fault, but it's the reality. I question whether the county has considered the additional 200 students that will be coming over to Ridgeview this year from Eureka School, and their impact on the already overburdened traffic situation. Another 27 homes exiting onto Elmhurst Drive and connecting Pastor Drive to Elmhurst will increase the volume even further, leading to potentially deadly results. 27 residents generate traffic alone, but so do their service people and visitors. The connection to Elmhurst Drive from this development should not happen unless the current zoning is followed. The third issue is flooding. I live across the street and two lots down from the project, and I see that my neighbor, Mr. Hawkins, is here. Linda Creek runs along the east side of my property and flows from the north, so from this property, the water flows down. I'm extremely concerned about the increased water runoff of 27 homes into that creek. During the heavy rains at the end of 2004, I saw that creek become a river. I could not believe the water flow that was coming through. The waters almost reached the back corner of my home, and I was considering going out and buying sandbags to protect my home from that creek. It currently sits today about 100 to 150 feet from my home. I'm concerned that this additional water flow from the development will lead to flooding of my home and other homes to the south. I'd like to know if the county has performed any studies using past flooding history to determine how the area will be impacted by these additional homes. Please do what is right for my neighborhood and deny the request to rezone this property. Thank you.
My name is Jack Harret. I live at 4832 Bentwood Way, Granite Bay. And that's between Swan Lake and Elmhurst, and it parallels East Roseville Parkway. We lived in Marin, and in 96 bought a home in that area because we projected ourselves being closer to our families that lived in the area, and we wanted a one-story home for obvious reasons as a senior. This community fit exactly what we wanted. We had the choice to go to the Del Webb communities, but that was not the environment that we wanted. And I have many friends that feel the same way, and many of them do live in Granite Bay. We want to live in a mixed community. We want the children, we want the school activity, the buses, whatever else it brings. In fact, fortunately, our daughter and her family moved in two doors from us. We have the ideal situation I realize not everyone can have. The Del Webb communities are available for one that wants all the amenities, the activities, the golf courses, whatever they want, they've got it. It is close by. There is no reason they couldn't live there if they wanted to. Why do they have to go to an enclave that has nothing? Yes, one-story homes? We have half of the homes in our community are one-story. You want to live somewhere, you're a senior, move into there, buy a home there, go up to Lincoln, go over to Roseville. So I don't understand the motive behind this. Perhaps it's all financial, but I just feel like it's not proper to change the setup of the community, and I hope you don't.
If, I can ask, if you can sort of speed up, if you're going to make sort of the same comments that you're against it and it's traffic and stuff, you just make that statement, and we understand, but try to bring something new.
Certainly.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Doss. I live at 9800 Beckenham Drive. I live right here, right across the street from the proposed development. I've been living there for 11 years. Mr. Pastor just said that there are properties that have increased property values in the past. Well, this is going to drive down all our property values right away. Okay, so, I'll see how he's helping us here. First thing is safety, and I know everybody's been talking about safety. I've noticed the driving patterns, and the way these kids come down the hill to school, it's pretty steep, and stay on the right-hand side because there's no cars coming up here. If you go through here, someone's going to get hurt. They just come really fast on the scooters and bikes. People already have a hard time stopping there. I've watched CHP for years writing tickets there. So some kid is going to get seriously injured or killed going to school one day. The trip generation report is totally unrealistic. You need to go down there, school starts Monday. Y'all need to go down there, planning department, you need to see the way that road backs up in there. If any kind of emergency vehicle has to get in here to help these senior citizens, they're not going to make it. Someone's going to die because you can't get there. So there's not been any thought for that at all. Lastly, the riparian zone there, you take out all those trees, you're taking out about 90% of the trees in that zone. I just don't understand it. This whole thing kind of stinks to me. I really hope you follow the plan. That's why I moved here. My kids go to this school, and if anybody gets hurt or killed there, I'll be the first one to testify in court that y'all knew that this was going to happen. So I hope you take this into consideration. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's John Pashke, and I live at 4865 Bentwood Way, which intersects with the streets that are under consideration here. I'd like to make three points. Number one is that a retirement community does not belong alongside these schools. Number two, I am amazed, and also alarmed and suspicious, that we are even discussing this issue after the planning department and the Granite Bay Committee have all recommended against this over a long period of time. And number three, the traffic study that was presented this morning certainly does not reflect my driving habits as an age-restricted senior, and certainly not my wife's driving habits. We're out on the road, I'm out on the road four or five times a day, and she's on the road double that period of time. So those numbers that were presented earlier seriously misstate the actual practice of people driving in Granite Bay, especially the seniors.
My name's Francis Petkovich. I live at 5121 Kinsley Court in Granite Bay. Could you please put the map on that shows the proposed site?
Can you?
You asked that we not repeat ourselves, but to some degree, you can't help that. I have to agree with the gentleman before me. I don't know why we're back here again, because you had the community, you had the Granite Bay MAC, you had your own planning department go against this plan. I don't know what your intentions are here, why you ask them to come back. I wrote an email to the planning department, the planner, and also the director, suggesting that maybe the developer and the immediate community, those people that live right in the area, be brought together along with the planning department to see how they can negotiate this. Something eventually will be built there, but I don't agree with the way it's set up. A suggestion, if I may, has consideration been made to make a marked reduction in the size of the project, and especially not opening a road onto Elmhurst and Swan Lake, but instead looking at going out on Skyview Lane, which is a private road about a third of a mile long, and it's a single lane, they would have to double the lane, but that would allow the people then to exit onto Eureka, and it would be a lot easier for them if they want access to railies, if they want to go to Safeway, they want to go to the hospitals, it's a shorter run. And in doing that, if I may...
You could eliminate this course, and the cost of building this could go the other way. And if you look at this property, the line is like this, how are you, how is the developer going to fill this road, the line up? Because the way it is right now is a hurt property, stop here, and that means that you could have to take the property away from somebody else unless that's already been negotiated.
My grandson, along with 1,000 other students, all who attend Oak Hill School 400, Ridgeview School 600 on Twin School Road, just a block away, travel on Elmhurst, as this has already been identified, and it's a clean sweep. They come to school, well, first of all, along, on the Twin School Road, there are two parks, three baseball dimes, tennis courts, and a playground for children. So you're going to have kids not only going to school in the morning and going home at night, but they're going back and forth all the time. And as the one gentleman already identified, it's a clean run-through there. You open this intersection, you're going to put these children at hazard. And from a selfish standpoint, I don't like that, because I don't want to see my kid hurt, my grandson, or anyone else's kid. If you take this out and eliminate this exit here and go out the other way, it makes a heck of a lot more sense. And lastly, I'd like to know what your agenda is for approving this project, because as presented, it's not acceptable. Please comment on your intentions for sending the project back to the planning department. Was it to approve the project, or was it to reduce the size of the project and utilizing maybe a different entrance other than Elmhurst and Swan Lake? Have you even considered the congestion that already exists on East Roseville Parkway, plus the intersection of East Roseville and Wellington at the high school? You go there in the mornings, and I'm a senior, and I go there early, you're backed up from a block to two blocks both ways, and when the kids are walking to and from school, they can be 10 feet apart and they don't stop. You just keep backing up because they keep going. There's no control of traffic there. So designing the project with an entrance and exit from Eureka Road via Skyview Lane is much more practical and would be much more safer. As it is designed, it's not good. Please remember, there's 1,000 children there. Thank you.
Good morning, commission members. My name is Nick Zamorano, and I reside at 9310 Pyramid Court, which intersects with Pastor Drive. I resided in Granite Bay for 14 years. I am here today, of course, to speak against the enclave project. My property in the woods backs up to the proposed project, and if you can see those six houses, my fence line runs right up against those six houses. Before we bought our home, my wife and I researched the undeveloped parcel of this land, boarding our property, to determine what eventually could be developed behind our home. We learned that the parcel was owned for no more than six homes, and several acres allowing for large, open space surrounding the nearby wetlands. We relied on this set of rules to plan for the construction of our home, including the landscape to take advantage of natural, open spaces. Now, under the proposed project, rather than enjoying the natural surroundings, there are six homes that are planned to be built along our entire fence line. The current community in Granite Bay plan does not allow for such a high-density development. The MAC itself rejected the proposed project because of its defects and its nonconformance to the rules. The county staff initially rejected the plan for the same reasons. The community overwhelmingly opposes this plan. No one in the woods wants this project to be built, and no one, I think, can prove a demonstrable benefit to the community. Rules are meant to be followed, and this project does not follow the rules. The role of your commission is to enforce the standards established by the community and local government. I urge you today to deny the project, and I'm also requesting a roll call today. This is not against, this is not a thing about us against them. We have nothing against the Pastor family. This is, and we're not anti-develop. We are for development, but we're for sensible and reasonable development, and we believe that the six homes that have been initially proposed is reasonable and sensitive development. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mai Isan. I live right across that development that they plan to build. I live on 9831 Elmhurst Drive. So I live on a two-acre lot, and I built a home, a 6,000-square-foot home. So if this home, this development that they plan to build, which is, you know, I'm worried about my value of my home, but I'm here, it's not that my home is valued or not, but I'm worried about the traffic. This lady here, she says she's already taken care of the traffic, and that lady over there, but my husband, the reason here, you have a 10 o'clock on Thursday morning, he cannot be here, but he's a manager, a chief of the staff of the California Transportation. So he planned to come here to show you how the traffic of the Elmhurst Drive. I'm very concerned about the school, the kid is there. I live just like 50 feet, 50 steps by the school, 100 steps by the development of the ladies try to sell. So she tried to sell, she said very good about that, but I'm still concerned about the traffic. That's what I'm here for.
Good morning. My name is Sandy Harris, and I'm here representing the Granite Bay Community Association. We've been around as long as Larry Sevenson has. Wake up, Larry. And I'm going to be... And I'm going to be referring to the findings for approval that the staff has given to you, and they're page 110 in your packet if you want to follow along. At last month's hearing, the staff gave you some very good, logical, strong reasons to deny this project, and I think they've had to scrape the barrel to come up with some findings to approve this project. And I want to start with the general plan amendment, finding number one. The Granite Bay community will benefit from the addition of senior housing in an area of Granite Bay where there is existing public infrastructure. Note, all services are several miles away in any direction, and there's no public transportation available. Finding number two under that, the general plan did not contemplate the need for age-restricted type residential uses. Note, there are no immediate services and no public transportation available at this location. In addition, the Granite Bay Community Plan has several areas already designated for high-density housing that are located where everyday services are available and many have been developed. Under the rezoning, finding number two, the proposed zoning would not represent spot zoning and would not be contrary to the orderly development of the area. Note, this is spot zoning infill project that is incompatible with existing development, which is contrary to the orderly development and many Granite Bay Community Plan goals, including compatibility between neighboring land uses and maintain the present character of established residential areas. Under the finding vesting tentative subdivision map, finding number one, the proposed subdivision, together with the provisions for its design and improvements, is consistent with the community plan. Note, goals of the Granite Bay Community Plan include land uses in Granite Bay shall be compatible with the community plan, preservation of the unique character of Granite Bay area, which is exemplified by the general rural environment, compatibility between neighboring land uses, maintain the present character of established residential areas, locate high and medium-density residential areas within existing developed community centers where urban services are most efficiently provided. Finding three under that title, the project with the recommended conditions is compatible with the neighborhood. This is an infill project. It's totally incompatible with the existing developed neighborhood and would contain the smallest lot sizes in Granite Bay. Under the finding for conditional use permit, finding number one, the proposed use is consistent with applicable policies and requirements of the community plan. Note, refer to the above inconsistencies already noted. Finding two under the use permit, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the proposed use will not, under the circumstances of this particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare of people residing in the neighborhood of the proposed use, or be detrimental or injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood. Note, this is a broad subjective statement with no factual information whatsoever to back it up. How do you know how this is going to affect the neighbors? Plan development, the finding number five, the proposed PRD subdivision has been designed in a manner such that adequate public services and vehicular traffic controls are provided. Note, there is no accurate way to gauge traffic impacts on existing neighborhoods. In a low-density residential neighborhood, just adding 300 trips per day is an impact to that neighborhood, even though it might not impact the area as a whole. However, this neighborhood has already been afflicted with unmanageable traffic impacts due to two elementary schools, Community Park and a high school. Traffic generated by these entities are an all-day occurrence and it doesn't always follow the usual traffic patterns. Finding number six, the design and density of the proposed subdivision are consistent and compatible with the character of the immediate neighborhood and will not be contrary to its orderly development. Note, not only is this project totally incompatible with the developed neighborhood, which is a mix of ages and larger lots, but is contrary to the many goals and policies of the adopted Granite Bay Community Plan. No justification or benefit to the community have been shown for a change in the existing designation based upon change in circumstances, and would be more appropriate to consider this new designation in the context of the review of the Granite Bay Community Plan, which is in process. Therefore, the Granite Bay Community Association asks the commission to deny a general plan amendment and rezone at this time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Harvey Goodrich, and I actually live on Swan Lake Drive. And I'm here today to be brief because my nanny leaves at noon, so I got to get home to my two-year-old twins before she leaves. So I just wanted to say that we all understand, I am opposed to the project, and I think everybody agrees that the development of this parcel is inevitable, but I think the biggest issue is, is this the right fit for this parcel and for the surrounding community? Very briefly, I'm not going to repeat what everybody's saying, but I will say, we purchased our home on Swan Lake because of the proximity to the school. We have two-year-old twins, couldn't be happier that our kids are going to be attending this award-winning school. And I think for future, to put homes that are affordable in this neighborhood so we can continue the growth for Granite Bay and provide award-winning schools for our children, that for me is a win-win situation. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Patricia McKinney. I have, I live, have lived happily at 6580 Pueblo Court for 28 years. I oppose this, this project for all of the reasons that have already been spoken to. What I have here for some more information is simply a history of all of the times that this project has been brought to MAC six times since May of 2004 through May of 2009. So I would just like to leave this with you for your information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please do the right thing.
My name is Deirdre Graham. I live at 9769 Elmhurst Drive, which is right at the corner of Swan Lake and Elmhurst. I get to stare at the lovely chain link fences on, and my family get to stare at them at the 15 trips that we make out of our house during a weekday. I would just like to put my additional thoughts that I would hope that you would deny this project. I am concerned about the process, and you're ignoring the recommendations of various committees that report to you, and I'm also concerned about the traffic. Thank you.
My name is Dawn Miller. I live at 9425 Swan Lake Drive. My kids have gone through Oak Hills, Ridgeview, and Granite Bay High School. I've taken them to school throughout the years. The traffic has been a mess forever, and why anybody would consider anything that would make the traffic worse, I don't understand. It doesn't seem like it's a project that's necessary. Obviously, there's housing that's affordable, and I'm relatively new to all of this. I don't understand why it keeps coming up again and again, and it does seem like it's just pure greed on the developers' part.
Hi, my name is Tammy Homing. I'm going to show you where I live on the map. I live, this is my house right here, this, of course, is the property. This is my property. Like, all here, so I'm adjacent to the property, like, a lot. I also oppose this development, and I, but I don't understand is why we're here again. Since 2004, we've had so many meetings, and when I bought my property in 1998, I researched the Granite Bay Community Plan to find out what was going to be on that property. If it was commercial, it was going to be a long drugstore or something, that's what that you're geared for. Well, I researched the plan and found it's only five to six homes. And now I'm, I feel like that, I don't have time, I mean, I have my grandchildren on Thursdays, so I have to find somebody to babysit my grandchildren so I can come here. And this is nuts. I don't have, I'm, I mean, I go to the MAC meetings when I don't have time to go to the MAC meetings. Now I'm coming here, I don't have time for this. I figure that you, that you got, what are we here the second time for? It's, if I'm looking at the community plan and I'm purchasing a large parcel, building a 5,000-square-foot home, I'm assuming that what's in the community plan is going to stay, or I wouldn't have built there. So I don't understand why the MAC meeting, everybody completely denies the project, and then it comes to you guys and you guys want to come and have another meeting. So I have to come again, and I don't have time for it. If, I mean, if we're expecting as the community, that we're looking to you guys as leaders the same way we're looking as MAC to leaders, we don't have time. That's why you guys are here and we're not. But if I'm having to waste my time to come here, which I should, which, it's not a waste of my time because this affects me, it's, I'm adjacent to, what, four or five or six homes? I mean, it's a lot of property that my three acres is next to. So I just want to say that based on, I mean, I agree with everything that's been said up until now, I'm trying not to repeat, but I don't, one of the things that someone didn't say is that, you know, a lot of us do research the Granite Bay Community Plan first before we even purchase a piece of property, when you see a large parcel next to you. So we're assuming that that's what's going to end up staying, that we don't have to come here. I mean, since 2004, I've had to attend numerous meetings fighting for what I thought was in the community plan. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is John Taylor. I also live on Swan Lake Drive, just about a block away from the, from the proposed project here. I'm here to speak against the project. Much of what I was going to say has already been said. Traffic and safety is obviously a big issue, and there's a lot of questions about the accuracy of the data that we've seen. I was here one month ago, one of the members of your committee, Mr. Chairman, I think it may have been you, I'm not sure, said that where you live, you do a lot, you live, one of you lives up in Sun City, Roseville, and even as a 55 and older, you do a lot more driving than you're used to before. So there's some questions on your part about that, I'm sure. The density is very, is very, very high. It's about like a 400% increase, I think. And as has been said several times, we moved here because of the existing density, and that's going away. People have mentioned the trees, the fact that the senior housing next to the schools, but again, and you've heard this, but to put it together, MAC's against it, your own committee is against it, the letters that you received before the last meeting were four to one against it. I am now number 17 against it of the people that have talked here today. And our concern is that we really want you to listen to the neighborhood. There is one of the commissioners that lives in our, in our area in Granite Bay, and I urge you to listen to your neighbors, especially in Granite Bay, and to deny this project. Six homes, that probably works. 26, 27 homes, in our opinion, does not work. Thank you.
I'm Ramona Connor. I'm a retired Realtor for 40-some years. I have owned four properties in Granite Bay, and when Folsom Lake, at the lake, was the only part that was Granite Bay, I've lived there, in Granite Bay since 1961. I've watched the schools grow, my kids went to the schools, and I just can't understand what's going on. People buy property with the hopes that someday they can do something with that piece of property. And then all of a sudden, you get these insurgents in from everywhere. Maybe they stay two years, maybe they stay one, maybe five, 10. They're gone after they destroy what we've tried to make happen in Granite Bay. My mother worked with Henry Moss and Calvin on this project for Tree Lake to go in. And there was supposed to be, this property was supposed to go to paper lots. At that point, I moved to Maui, and I was no longer involved in it, and somehow it passed by. Calvin somehow didn't realize that one of the names on one of the parcels was my sister's name. Henry knew who it was. Okay, putting that aside, we have a drainage problem with the golf course, with all of the drainage from the oak, the woods, and from the little golf course goes down on our property, and it has created those wetlands that have grown and grown and grown. I'd like to know what the county's going to do about getting rid of that water. One lady addressed the water situation. It's not our fault. It's coming down from the golf courses and the woods. The drainage, for some reason, isn't being diverted. I also want to address the fence that was put up. The fence had to go up. We had kids going through there on bikes and on these motor things, Land Rovers, whatever you want to call them, going through the property, they could be hurt. People were dumping trash at the end of Pastor Drive. We had to do something to control the property so it didn't turn into a junkyard. And there was another, I guess I did address the water. And I am not against it going through, through the street my daughter lives on, Skyview. I'm not against that at all, but I'd like to see something done. My folks worked hard to buy this property. They deprived themselves, and now we have these people that move in, and they're going to take over, but they're not going to stay. I've lived in this area since 1956, and it gets sickening, and your master plan really does need to be redone. That was put together years ago. My first husband went to Eureka School and heard it, and they were talking then about what they planned. What happened? What's all this stuff that we have to argue over? You buy property, you expect someday you're going to be able to leave something to your children? What can you leave to your children if these people are coming in, live a year or two, move out, and destroy all the things that you have worked for? I am very upset with Klaasur County, and I sure hope you take into consideration the old people. I'm old, I'm 80, and I'll be damned. I don't drive like these people do. I have three cars, a truck, a pickup, and a sports car, and I barely drive them to keep them on the road for, to go for their oil changes. So this deal of driving when you're old, it's ridiculous. And you don't need clubs when you're old, you don't need all this bull. I have grandkids that were into the two new little schools over there on the school, Twin School Road, and still live on, on Skyview. And I think it's time you took into consideration what the old people have worked for and deprived their children and themselves for, to have this property done for these newcomers to come in. I have one thing to say, and I said it to a guy that worked in my real estate office at Koha Banker. How long have you lived here? Five years. If you don't like it, go back where you came from. That's my viewpoint. Thank you.
My name is Maureen Little, and I live on 9411 Swan Lake Drive. In 1993, I was a salesperson of Polty Homes at Tree Lake. And one of the things you had to understand was the master plan and what was going to be built. Because when people come in, which were most all families, you're, you're telling them exactly what will be built in the community. This was the only thing that we did not know about. It was open space as far as we were concerned. But had it been that, I don't know if the sales would have been as good. So that's, that's all I have to say. I don't really need to repeat everything else. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Jessica Barrack, and I live actually right on the corner of Elmhurst and Swan Lake Drive. You know, when we bought that property, this was not the plan. And I understand that the elderly lady that was, people have scrimped and saved, and just like we've scrimped and saved, and we'd like to leave something for our kids too. However, that was not how that they, the conditions that they had bought that property under. You know, I'm sorry that now all of a sudden you want to create this community and make more money out of it. That shouldn't be at the, at the risk of our community itself. As far as me, my question to you guys is, if you can go ahead and make the changes on this property right now, does that mean that individuals that have large properties, say two, three acres, they can come back to you and say, you know what, we want to build another home on that? So we'd like to make changes to our property lines now? This is what, essentially what you're doing, and I, I don't agree. And I think you need to take all of that into consideration. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brenda Common, and I own a home a street up on Beckenham. And I just want to say, I, we've lived there five years, and it's not, we're not in and out for a few years. The amount of years it takes to get your child from kindergarten to high school, you know, we are long-term in this community, and... know, we are long-term in this community, and I have a junior higher and a fifth grader going to the school. And I won't even let my son ride his bike to school. They, it is just bumper-to-bumper bumper cars all the way to Elmhurst where it intersects. The liability is huge here for the county, for the builders. I don't even know why this is being discussed. That is why all of these votes have come to you. It's just, it's, it's mind-boggling that you're even considering this. And I just want to let you know too, since all this has even come up, you're aware of the schools adding hundreds of more kids. It's just, it's, I, I can't even believe this is being considered. I mean, all the money in the world that you guys are going to make, it is not worth. These little five-year-olds that I see flying down, people cannot see him in the midst of all these cars. It is well documented, if you call the sheriff, the highway patrol, they can't even manage the traffic. And these people, they're impatient, they're crossing through, they're, I mean, these little kids are almost run over every day as it is. I mean, I can't even imagine that we're going to be adding more density to this area. So I would caution you to please come down there Tuesday. I'm sure if you even saw this, you wouldn't even, wouldn't even consider it. And call the sheriff and the highway patrol, this is already documented, the transportation problems. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kirk Hartwig. I also live on Swan Lake. The two, two main arguments that I have are the safety and the property values. Just one more thing about the safety. Swan Lake is consistently a place where people speed. It's a wide, it's a wide road compared to the other roads. It's a downhill path from the top of Swan Lake down to Roseville Parkway. I, I don't see how this can't add to that problem, all right? And I would just like to emphasize a little bit more about the single fam, or the single-story aspect that we're talking about. I think if the developer was really interested in having available homes for seniors that are single-story, the 50% number is pretty, pretty significant. Fifty percent of the homes in Granite Bay are single-story. And I would, I would, I would gather at this time, with the way the economic situation is, there's probably a fair amount that either are for sale or, or would be for sale if people thought they could sell them. So that's, that's a big number. If people really want a single-family home, they've got them. They're available. We don't need to build anymore. And as the owner of a two-story home, I, I, first of all, I see, I see that those new homes would actually compete directly with the single-story homes, if you're 55 or older. They're newer, presumably they have better features. So for the single-story homeowners, I would be concerned, right? Because all of a sudden, there's these brand-new homes that are going to compete with them. As a two-story homeowner, all of a sudden, you've just given a senior one more reason not to buy my house, right? So.
I, I do have one quick question because that has, has come up, and I don't know if it'd be the Realtor or whatever. I keep hearing this number of single-stories in Granite Bay, but my familiarity with Granite Bay is, is that these homes are on large lots. And I know one of the reasons for doing the denser part for the seniors, because a lot of seniors don't like acre, two-acre lots to maintain. They want a smaller home that they can take care of.
If I could just address two points, and that was one of them. The community that we live in, which is the Estates at Tree Lake, which is basically the bottom half of that picture, more or less, I believe it's every other home is a single-story, 2,400-square-foot home. It, it's surrounded by those types of homes. It's bordered by Elmhurst on one side and Elmhurst on the other, all the way down to East Roseville Parkway. I think that's why so many of us are saying, why do you need more 2,400-square-foot homes? We have enough already. And, you know, the only benefit for the seniors here is the bocce ball court, and that they all get to hang together on the same street. I mean, I, we just don't see the point. That's why I say it's, it's an excuse.
Okay, okay.
But the main, the main point for, that I wanted to make, and I, that I forgot to make, that's very important, is that, as you've heard, and I don't have my calculator with me, but I've heard again and again, it's a 400% increase in density. Why? If, if we need senior housing, why does it have to be a 400% increase in density? I tried to give my own opinion years ago. I said, you know, 12 homes would be 100% increase in density. And of course, the people that live there say, hey, we, we want six homes. That's what we bought into. That's when we bought our, you know, we made our 2 million, million-five homes, thinking that this was going to be six homes. But I was trying to be open-minded.
Okay, I let you speak twice, and it was just on the question of lots.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Curtin. I just feel compelled to make a few points to you this, this morning. I'm a land use attorney for the applicant and representing the owner as well, the pastor family. And I just, again, want to take just a few brief moments to address some of the issues that I hear over and over, not the technical issues, but some of the legal issues. And I just want to make it, this will also respond to a statement that is raised periodically throughout this hearing and in July, but also in the staff report, there was a statement made in there that the applicant has not shown any evidence, any evidence, to support the land use change in the general plan. And in fact, you've heard it from the applicant in July, again today, also from some of the commentators. But also, it, it, it's, it's important to understand that you have several legal reasons to approve this project with the, with the change in the, in the general plan designation. First of all, and I'm, I'm sure you all recognize, as planning commissioners here, that you have the ability to recommend a change in the general plan to the Board of Supervisors. The legislature recognizes that general plans can be amended four times a year, and that's just not one small part of a general plan, but four times a year, you could combine amendments throughout to change your general plan, to adapt, to change circumstances in your community. This community plan, which is part of the general plan, is 20 years old. It has never been amended. So technically or legally, it could have been amended 80 times. It has not. I think, with the evidence that is shown to you today, to provide moderately prized housing for seniors is a change in circumstances. So there is adequate evidence in the record to demonstrate the change to the general plan. And it would also be supported legally. But what I hear over and over is when people bought their property, they reviewed their community plan, which is the right thing to do, to do, to determine what uses could, could go around their property, but not will go around their property. Once again, general plans are not static documents. They can't be static because we change, our community changes, and our circumstances changes. A general plan does not guarantee what will occur on property with that designation. It is just a plan for the future which can be changed. Secondly, I think what's also really important is state law requires counties and their general plans to do two really, really important things. First, identify sites for housing of all segments of the community. And secondly, to specify ways to meet housing needs for all income categories of a community. The applicant's request for a general plan amendment seeks to implement these two very critical goals in, in state law. Again, to develop housing that's not existent in the Granite Bay community. The Attorney General's Office has made it a priority to go around the cities and counties and review their general plans and look at their new plans to determine if they're meeting these goals. They, he, the Attorney General's Office just last month sought to petition and did win, to petition into a, an existing lawsuit against the city of Pleasanton that through the initiative process has a residential cap on development. He alleges in that lawsuit that that's illegal because it can't implement those two goals in the state housing element. I am a planning commissioner with my community. I understand the difficulty in making this decision, especially when you have so many adverse opinions on what to do out here. We went through a specific plan process in our community, and the first thing that was handed to us was the new legislation, AB 375. That was passed last year mainly to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The, the ways to do that is to take infill, infill areas and develop with higher-density housing, so you're not going out into farmlands or areas that are protected with, with habitat, and you're bringing your communities in closer because there's transportation corridors and services. We, we were asked to review that plan because we did not want to hear from the Attorney General's Office that we weren't complying and, and get into a lawsuit that would cost our city millions of dollars to defend. So the, the points I'm trying to make here is, this project allows the county to be proactive, ensuring that its general plan provides housing for all segments of its community, and it is clearly consistent with the vision of AB 375. This approval, this process that we're going through right now allows you here to make the local land use planning decisions that need to be made, instead of allowing the Attorney General to come in and tell you how to make them, or any other state agency, like they're doing in Pleasanton and many other communities. So once again, you certainly have the legal basis for approving this project. The applicant has showed ample reasons to justify it. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No, thank you. Please, please refrain from comments.
Good morning. I'm Carol Taylor. I live on Swan Lake Drive. On two sides of the property, near the top and down the left side, there's a small stream that feeds into Swan Lake. In Swan Lake, there are beavers, otters, great blue heron, egret, and fish that people eat. Some of the chemicals running off the streets and lawns now go into that lake from our area. I'm afraid that if we had 26 houses, they will still be runoff in spite of gutters. They'll still be runoff of chemicals that will go into the lake and affect all of this wildlife and people who eat those fish. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and cut it off. No, you, you spoke already, so.
I know I did, but I believe this lady's threatening the community and saying that they're going to.
Okay, please, I'm.
Sir, you cannot cut him off.
Yes, I can.
I have constitutional provisions here that prohibits you from cutting him off.
Sir, you, you had your opportunity. He had his opportunity.
The California Constitution and the Constitution of the United States that forbids you as a public body from cutting him off unless it violates.
He is not at the podium. I'm not going to debate with you. I'm gonna, please. Everybody has had an opportunity to speak, yourself included, so please, I'll let you wrap up, Camille.
Thank you.
Now, you're going to hear her again. That's okay. Right?
I'd like to address a few of the questions that were raised by the audience, and staff may want to respond as well to some of the specific questions. I think MAC member, Mr. Anderson, I think spoke it well when he said that most of the technical issues have been resolved. The only thing I know how to do, and the only thing that I know that we can do, is use the processes that are in place to evaluate any proposal that comes forward. And we've done that with the staff, with the environmental documents that have been reviewed by staff. And I think it's important to remember the facts. I mean, if we were all not in this room, we're in front of you on a 12-acre development of 27 single-family homes that has demonstrated through the environmental documentation and individual specific studies to have a negligible environmental effect. One of the comments that was stated was there was some concern about drainage and a runoff. Rebecca, I think you can speak to that with respect to detention basins, et cetera. Perhaps you'd like to answer that question?
At, at this time? The project is proposing to collect all runoff from the new streets and impervious surfaces and collect the runoff in a detention basin located on the western, northwestern portion of the property. This will create detention, which will mitigate any impacts for downstream flooding. There should be no difference in downstream flooding conditions because this project is mitigating for that. The, the basin will also act to treat the runoff through grassy swales, vegetative uptake. So that will take care of some water quality issues as well.
I think it's also important that when you have 50% of the site is open space, you certainly have less runoff than you have a higher percentage, of course, not, not open space. So I think that's obviously. One question was asked about why we're not going through Skyview Lane. You can see on the aerial in front of you, along the west side of the property, a dotted line that goes along the entire west portion and then angles up to the right. That's there because it's an easement. And every parcel map and development in the area is, since there was parcel maps in the area, I think the earliest one was 1974, reflects an easement to Elmhurst. So an earlier speaker indicated that somehow this roadway was off the property. There is a dedicated offer of, dedicate, excuse me, an offer of irrevocable dedication for right-of-way in this area on the parcel map that was, that created these lots. This is not owned by someone, it's not part of a lot, it's designated for future roadway access. And this easement has been in, on the property in perpetuity since the get-go. I mean, so whoever way back in the 70s envisioned this development, connection has always seemed fit to connect the roads on the north to the roads on the south. Why have we knocked on up Skyview Lane although we have an emergency access is simply because these roads, or public roads, improve to current public standards despite the fact that, as you've heard, there's peak times of the day where there's serious traffic impacts. No argument about that. But these roads were always envisioned to be able to carry the traffic that this property would generate. And again, all we have to use to make decisions is empirical information. I don't deal in the world of innuendo. I deal in the world of real information and facts, as you do. We pay professionals to give us advice, that's all I can rely upon, and 29 years of experience doing this. And the traffic generation numbers have usually been borne out to be pretty darn accurate. And the audience has made my case, that's obviously one of the key reasons why we thought, what type of a land use could we put here to not exacerbate a peak-hour traffic problem? That's why we've suggested what we've suggested, because those people have more flexible lifestyles to travel at different times of the day, and obviously are not going to hit the roads at 8:00 AM, 9:00 AM, because they don't have to take a child to school. But you know, I grew up in a neighborhood where my grandparents lived right next to my school, and mom and dad worked, and I went through the gate to my grandparents' home every day after school. That used to be a very preferred model. That was the neo-traditional land use planning that we're kind of going back to now, where we're trying to incorporate mixes of land uses in our master plan communities. I mean, it comes as no surprise to you, Placer Vineyards, any of the major master plan communities, Empire Ranch, has a variety of land uses adjacent to one another. And I guess the question that I have to ask myself as a land planner with a degree in planning is compatibility. What makes something incompatible? The size of the lot doesn't make it incompatible. It's what happens and what land use, what nuisances are created by that land use that might make something incompatible. Not simply because you have a 6,000-square-foot lot next to a 10. We have that all over. That is modern planning principles. I mean, that's the whole purpose of having a variety of homes. That's why we have a general plan. That's why we have a land use element. We don't have all the same thing. That doesn't generate a healthy community. We want a variety of land uses in that community, and that's why we've proposed this. As you heard earlier, we're, we're legally mandated to maintain this as it is in perpetuity for age-restricted development. So is 12 bridges, so is Sun City. And it's kind of interesting that Del Webb or Pulte would go to Sun City and build those homes in the middle of nowhere. There's no grocery stores. There's no grocery stores, really. There's one now in Lincoln, didn't stop people from wanting to buy there. And the fact that there was no public transportation didn't stop people from wanting to buy there. In the last 10 to 15 years, when these homes were built in the late 90s and the early 2000s, architecture and design has come a long, long way. And I submit to you that the reason that they did the National Demonstration Home and is getting such international recognition is because we learn. We get better as we go along. We come up with new innovative ideas. No doubt, there's one-story homes all through this community, but they don't embody the design features that we're proposing. They don't have the multiple counter heights, they don't have accessible showers, they don't have blocking the walls, they don't have pre-wiring for computer systems that allow your doctors to monitor. There's just a whole lot of evolution that's occurred, and that's why we're proposing what we're proposing. One story makes sense because people over 55 don't want two stories, but there's a whole lot more to that story than just that. And I just wanted to show you that with you. Yes, I understand that immediate residents are concerned when things change, but if you had six lots on that property, you wouldn't have 50% open space. You wouldn't have walking paths through the neighborhood. You wouldn't have picnic places and places for the public to access. You wouldn't have a walking path through to the school. Estates don't provide that to the public. Estates keep people out. That's the idea. And we felt that this would be a better way to be a better neighbor and keep that space open and let people walk through that site, as they have historically done, in a safe way. So that was in our thought process. You know, it's, it's interesting, when I met with the superintendent of the school district, Tim McCartney here, recently, he drives from Dublin, commutes. The first words out of his mouth were, couldn't wait to buy one of these, this is a great idea. And then Bob Schultz, the other retired superintendent, came in, said the same thing. Would be very interested in buying one of these. This is what we need in our community, more different types of housing. It brings people back into the neighborhood that it would leave, brings their money, keeps it there, has a place for kids to go after school, keeps an eye on the neighborhood. You know, I remember 25 years ago, neighborhood watch was the big buzzword. We don't really talk about neighborhood watch anymore, but it was, we don't want everybody to leave the exodus in the neighborhood at one time in the morning and then come home. That's when burglaries happen. And it used to be a really good thing to have people in the community during the day. And it used to be a really good thing to have people in the community during the day. That's what we're trying to do here in a neighborhood that tends to be more families. But some point in the future, all the homes, as you heard from Randy Pastor, 15 years from now, when the kids are grown, this community's gonna change as well. So things do change. And the reason the school enrollment's declining out in that area is because families are not coming into that area like they once did. That's a demographic trend that none of us are gonna change. But we would like to provide a housing that is going to draw the demographic and be consistent with what's going on with the demographics and not build plain vanilla that's antiquated. Obviously, we want to do something that's gonna be successful, not unsuccessful. So those are just some thoughts about what was said. With respect to, there was one other comment I wanted to make on a technical issue. Shoot. Ah, why we're not in the general plan process. I think we talked about that a little bit the last meeting, but just to reiterate, and some of the people that spoke today weren't here, we are fully aware that there's a general plan process going on. We were made aware of that like everyone was in December when Supervisory User started that process. And at that time, we sat down with Supervisory User and said, what does this mean for us? We filed our applications in May of 2008. We did our pre-development application in 2007. We went through all the plans and the documents and information that's required and got deemed complete in August. We didn't know anything about a potential community plan update. Wasn't public. Nobody had said anything about it. So to throw us under the bus at this point and tell us to wait for two or three years, last time you asked the staff how long they thought it would take before that community plan process could be completed, it's anybody's best guess. Two to three years, three to four years, could be longer, we don't know. But to take somebody and put them on the sidelines for that process when we have demonstrated that there is no adverse environmental impacts, that the impacts are negligible, seems unfair and unreasonable to us. And that's why we continue to go forward. And we could have certainly just stopped and waited for this whole process to be done. But you're right, we need to do something with the property. Had we developed this, we wouldn't be here today. The only reason that we're having so much grief is we didn't. And these neighbors wouldn't have had any opposition because it would have been a fait accompli. It would already be there. So we would like to get on with this, have something there that we think minimizes the impacts to the neighborhood in the absolute best way I know how to do as a planner. And your staff and the staff report and analysis has supported that fact. So if there's no more technical questions, I think we've talked about most of the issues that were raised.
I have a question. Good, Camille?
Yes, Richard.
Let's see, in the staff report, it indicates that the developments to the, I get my directions confused here a little bit, the developments to the east and the south are zoned, and actually a portion of this parcel are actually zoned at the same as what you're proposing for the total parcel?
To clarify, our onsite density is 2.6 units to the acre, limited to. This Tree Lake community is 2.27 to the acre. This street is 2.1 to the acre. That's the overall density. The zoning in this area is consistent with the zoning on this one lower parcel. The other three are different.
Okay, so you're proposing a zoning. Will it be similar to the surrounding neighborhoods or...
It would be the same as this with the overlay called the planned development overlay, which allows us to deviate from the 17,000-square-foot lot. If we just put the same zoning on all four parcels, then we'd have a minimum lot size of 17,426, I think it is, or something like that. We've asked to come back and put a planned development overlay, it's a zoning overlay, to allow us to cluster those lots and create more open space. If we just carved this up into 17,000-square-foot lots, we wouldn't have open space. So while the underlying zoning is the 17,426 square feet that you're referring to, our lot sizes are smaller utilizing the planned development process, creating more open space and smaller lots. But the total number of units is consistent with the 17,426 square foot. That's the basis of where we get our density.
Okay, and then I think what I'm hearing then, the planned development option is an option that's available for the landowner to make a decision on?
It's an option articulated in the community plan. It's an option throughout Placer County. It's a planning technique that's utilized to allow you to have innovative designs. And as I showed you last time, you know, I didn't take you through all that again, the number of statements in the Granite Bay Community Plan that encourage the use of the planned development process, which is create more open space, innovative design, variety of lot sizes, whether or not just to have the old lot and block, they called it subdivision, where everything was rectilinear on a street, street, 17,000, 17,000, 17,000. So that's what we've done.
Okay, and maybe just a little add-on question. I think you might have partially answered it, but there were several people that brought up a figure of 400% increase in density. Could you address that?
Well, I guess I haven't done my math today, but 27/6 over 27, I mean, they're just referring to the 21 additional units over the six that are allowed under the existing zoning is where they're getting that number. So the fact that there's 27 total lots is 400% more than the six that are currently allowed there now. So that's where they're coming up with that number. I mean, two is 100% more than one. I mean, so what? I mean, the point is, what, what are...
Okay. Hey, Camille?
I have another question too.
Wait, just a... Just, no, just, she... I've heard false statements today already, so don't worry. Go ahead, Camille.
The math, I'm sure, is accurate. The point is, what is the result of the increase in density that creates a nuisance and is deleterious? That's what we need to look at. Density is just a morphous word. Pick a number, any number. You know, is 20 better than seven? I don't know. The reason that we are at down to 27 from the 42/39/27 is to create the open space that we have. But there are economics that underlie this. No news to anybody. We have to pay all the development fees. We have to pay for the improvements to the development. We have to pay for the homeowners association dues and amortize that over 27 homes. At some point, it gets uneconomic. You just stop. And I certainly don't want to have a project approved that is gonna sit vacant for the next 15 or 20 years. Well, that's great for the community, but it's not great for my client, and that is not a good use of the land. And I submit to you what Ms. Curtin was referring to as a planner, and this comes as no surprise to you because you deal with this all the time. The state is breathing down our backs to intensify land use and density for a whole bunch of environmental reasons. Lawsuits happen all the time. You know, the county's been a part to many of them, Sierra Club, et cetera, wanting to increase our density. It's the wave of the future. We cannot stop it because we have to reduce some of the environmental impacts that they come from sprawl. This is not sprawl. This is the antithesis of what we want to be doing with our land use and try to create a land use that minimizes environmental impacts. I don't know what else we could do.
Okay, one more quick question, I guess. Are the, like, we keep hearing about the six parcels. Are those actual parcels? Are they already parceled out or are they...
No, no, no. The zoning would allow six dwelling units. Someone would have to come back and do what I'm doing right now for a zone change to create six on those lots. Because right now, there's four, as you can see. One, two, three, four, and of course, that one has the wetlands in it. So you'd come back, someone would have to come back with a tentative tract map, carve it up into six lots in some capacity, and we'd go through this whole process as well. There's no entitlement to allow you to build six homes. It's just the density zoning on the property would allow six lots.
Okay, so currently then, the property owner is, you say there's four lots, so the property owner's entitled to build on four lots no matter what right now?
Right, right. I may have to go get a building permit, but...
It'd be just a building permit at that point.
That's correct. And it could be a 35-story home and, you know, all that kind of stuff. They could have pigs, chickens, whatever. I mean, sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Camille.
Okay, okay. I'm gonna close it off, bring it back to the commission. First, I'd just like to maybe address some of the things that had been said about the commission and our role and responsibilities. First, on this, we just make recommendations to the supervisor on this for zoning change, density change. We do have certain powers, though, and as I listen to everybody's passionate pleas and, you know, their thoughts on this, there is a reason that there's people from different areas of the county. First off, when we're sitting here, we don't look at it as specifically Granite Bay. We look at it as Placer County. Granite Bay is a part of Placer County. Another reason that we set up here is, is we don't have a personal interest. In other words, we're not your direct neighbor. We sit here like a judge that is hearing a case. We have to be nonpartial. We listen to what you say. We listen to both sides, and then we come to our decisions. One of the things that I want all of you to understand is, is that you might or might not someday have to come before this body. I know one lady came up and made a comment that she had a great big parcel, and does she have the right to come before us and ask for smaller lots? Yes. Any one of you have the right. It could be something as simple as a property dispute where somebody's putting in a swimming pool and the person next door says they don't like the swimming pool next to them and basically causes a big problem and maybe the person that wants the pool in needs a variance of two or three feet. A lot of times, we hear that. And that's why I want to stress to you, you know, we're here to sit and judge. We judge on the facts. If staff says that, you know, they've done traffic studies or somebody else has done a traffic study and they've verified that it's a legitimate study, then we take that as gospel. Now, if we hear somebody that just gets up and says, hey, I think there's too much traffic, that's not a traffic study. So we do understand your concerns, but we are here to listen to the facts, come up with a recommendation to send to the Board of Supervisors. Now, I know there was a comment, why did we come back, you know, this month from last month after we had voted? Well, one of my concerns was, is we didn't have a complete package. We wanted a package that we could send to the supervisors that would have all the information. And your testimony is gonna be part of that today. It's all on record, all your comments, your suggestions, everything goes up. And I definitely let you know, I've heard you. I mean, I'm a property owner. I own house. I understand your concerns when something happens right next door. Some of you might think it's good, some of you might think it's bad, but we are put in a position to have to sit here and make a decision. So having said that, that's why sometimes I get upset with you when you start yelling out from the audience or you come up, you've told us your concerns, and then later on, you know, add more. Well, you always hear different things, and, or you just want to make a comment back because somebody said something you didn't like to hear. Well, you have to understand, you get a certain shot at it and that's it. So with that, and specifically, please, it's not the Brown Act. Please, be respectful. We sit here and listen to everybody. We take all your concerns in. So please, be respectful of us and staff and the other people sitting here. Don't forget, someday you could be on the other side of an issue where you'd have just as big a crowd that would be against what you were wanting to do. So please, respect that.
But I mean, 1.0...
No, and I'll, no, no. Please.
That is, you give greater deference and time to the applicant than you do to the audience.
Actually, if you took the total time that we were here today, the bigger portion of it was to the ones that were opposed. So please.
17,000 versus one.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn to our counsel and ask Scott if he has any concerns about the way the meeting was conducted as it refers to, as it's been referred to, the Brown Act and/or the Constitution.
Yeah, just to emphasize, I think Mr. Denio was correct and his explanation of the role of the commission was apt here. There is a right to comment on items that are at a public meeting under the rules of the Brown Act, but the chair does have the discretion to conduct a meeting in an orderly fashion so that the public's business can be done. And that does include a limitation on time speaking and, in fact, a limitation on the number of speakers. And I think that the chair has been respectful and appropriate in terms of the amount of information which has come before this commission in order to allow this commission to make a thoughtful decision on items before today. So the chair does have the discretion to close the public hearing, and I think the chair does have the discretion then to go into deliberations.
Thank you. Okay, and I have closed it off to the public, so, okay.
Can I ask a question of Sam?
Sure.
Let me see, one comment that I heard in the process, either written down by somebody that was provided to us or somebody over the phone, was in relationship to maybe the community plan and that the community plan would take a look at a lot of large-scale issues and consider several proposals for zoning changes that would come forward. But one of the items that came up is, and you hear this in a lot of communities, is the capacity of sewers and how, you know, if this is granted to these folks at this time, you know, it's not taken into account in the total general plan. And so I guess in terms of allocation of sewer, how is this really addressed in this analysis would be my question.
I'll start off, and maybe Rebecca can jump in, but, I mean, this is only community plan change requests before you right now, the Granite Bay Community Plan Review Process, which was introduced at the end of last year. Since that time, there's been a six-month timeframe where residents have submitted requests for land use changes. This is, that's a whole separate process where there are different land use change requests being made. That staff will be going back and doing studies to see what the cumulative impact of all these changes are. This project here today submitted a request as part of that process, not knowing what action was gonna be taken on it. So they are a part of that process, but this is what's before you today. They're, you know, willing to move forward at this point. But, you know, bottom line, there is a separate process where those things are looking at, but for today's purposes, you know, we've, you know, we have addressed impacts to, you know, sewer just based on the proposal in front of us. And if Rebecca wants to add a little bit to that, I'll let her step in.
Sure. Rebecca Tabor, Engineering and Surveying. The wastewater discharge from the proposed project was analyzed as part of the environmental review. It's on actually pages 45 and 46 of the packet in the mitigated NAGDAC. And the sewer or the wastewater is proposed to be collected and treated at the city of Roseville's Dry Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. The, there are, there actually is a mitigation measure, but let's look at this because what we looked at was that there is an increase of 21 units over the base zoning. So that was considered. And due to the density impact, there is a mitigation fee that would be paid, and the applicant is aware of that and has agreed to that. So, and that is for, towards a cost of future capital improvement project one, which is design and construction management along with actual construction costs for an increase to the sewer line downstream. So it's been looked at, it's been mitigated.
And so it sounds like the mitigation, I guess, maybe the vein that I was hearing the question was, you know, if they're... the question was, you know, if they're given an unfair advantage by going forward now in this regard versus the other people have to go through the property. And I think what I hear you saying is no, because they've had to pay for future upgrades in the sewer line through their mitigation fees?
They, right. Because of the increase in density, if there was no increase in density, they wouldn't be paying any additional mitigation fee. They'd just be paying their sewer connection and hookup fees, but because there's an additional 21 units, they're paying towards this capital improvement project that has already been identified in a study, RMC Technical Memorandum. So, they're paying their fair share towards that based on the increased density.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I've been thinking about this because I wish Harry was here, because we did take a vote, you know, last meeting on this and I, and then sort of wrapped up coming back, trying to get a full package together and also giving the public and applicant additional time to speak. I, I don't know unless, as I said, you know, show of hands if it's really changed anybody's vote, you know, from last, last meeting till now. If Harry's here, then.
You're looking for comments?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just looking for personal, because mine hasn't changed either and I don't know if everybody's, you know, primary vote's the same. I mean, the thing that makes the changes is Harry's not here.
I think that my feeling is somewhat the same as it was last time and I think I mentioned it last time and that was that I was leaning toward just dealing with the rezoning and the general plan amendment on its own and letting that go forward to the full board of supervisors and letting them wrestle with the density issue and the community issue as such. And would they want to, would it be their preference to deal with this as an individual hearing at this time or would they prefer to defer it until there was the time and the place on the whole general plan for the whole basin, for the whole Granite Bay area? I, I don't know that I've changed my position on that. I, well, I think the project has tons of merits and it, you know, I'm sure that's the kind of thing we have to do and the state pushing us in that direction. I still think that it's somewhat helpful for me as one commissioner to know that what I'm working with is that it has the tools to accomplish what they're setting out to do. And so, I guess I still think that it would be easier for me to make a decision if the board had made their decision on the zoning and the general plan amendment, so that then the project that we were hearing, I knew for sure was permitted. Right now, it's, we're saying, well, we think the board's going to maybe approve this, but we don't know. Maybe they won't approve it or maybe it's going to end up in litigation or where's it going to go? And so, I still feel that it would be my preference to let the board make that decision and then finalize a project that fits that, that rezoning. And I guess, I could vote either way. I could vote for passing it on favorably or I could vote in denial and let them appeal it. I don't think it makes any difference.
Right.
Because it's going to go to the board in either case and the decision is still going to be the same. So, no matter which way I vote, I don't think it really matters in the long term. I think it's, the idea is to get a decision on the general plan and the rezoning so that then I feel comfortable acting on a project. And I, and normally I don't get that picky, but in this case where there is considerable public opinion about this project, I, I think it would be helpful to have a resolution of that, for me at least. I don't want to be putting words in anybody else's mouth here, but I, for me, that would, that would be a more comfortable way to resolve the issue and maybe then if there was, if there were changes made by the board in the zoning or the potential for this property, then the project at that point could be tailored exactly to that, for that purpose and not have to have multiple issues on the project. Because there's, there's been a lot of, a lot of effort put out to get input on this thing and I think that, I don't know how soon the county's prepared to move forward with a community or the community plan or the, maybe it's two or three years, who knows? And I don't know whether, you know, you have to know that at this day and age when the economy is so bad that we should do what we can do to encourage things to happen, I guess, to get a healthier community. And I feel strongly about that as well, but I'm just concerned that it would be easier, I think, to have the right, all the tools in place to make it work.
Enough said, I guess. And I don't think that's exactly the way you feel, but that's one of the few times we even got totally agreed. Well, the dilemma I have, because I think it is that I.
Chairman, can you speak into the mic? None of us can hear what you guys are saying. You might as well be in a private meeting.
Okay, there, can you hear me now? Because my feeling is that it is a great type of project and it fits more with the direction we're going. I mean, honestly, if you, if you take what the state, environmental, community, what everybody's going towards is small lots, I mean, honestly, today, probably the majority of Granite Bay would not be what it is today if it came before us as it did you where back then it was looking, you know, different sized lots and stuff and then came up with the idea, which is, is good. And I think all of us see that the trend to the, to the bigger lots, the larger homes and stuff is, it's not what people can afford and not what's going. I know, I hear all the time that it's going to hurt my property values and stuff. I don't know honestly if our property values can be hurt much worse than, than they have been, but I, you know, in listening to everybody, even on the negative side, I hear, well, there, you know, there's housing for seniors and I live out there because I like that kind of lifestyle and stuff. Well, that's what they're trying to provide is a product for seniors that could live out there, but on the smaller lots and, you know, and have a lifestyle that everybody in Granite Bay has and likes. Traffic issues, I, I've been out there, I've looked at it and I understand that there's a traffic problem and honestly, it's hard for me to say when everybody's talking about, well, when school's in session and everybody's running, you know, their kids to school and stuff. A lot of the traffic problem is the Granite Bay people that live there running your kids to school if you're late and driving fast and driving crazy. It's not some stranger from, you know, from Lincoln, Rockland, whatever causing the problem. It's the people that have the kids that are going to those schools. I know the roadways, there's definitely improvements that probably should be looked at for traffic calming and stuff to slow the people down because even nowadays in the design, a lot of the roadways and stuff wouldn't be designed the way they are even at the densities just because of the traffic issues that you have where it's real easy to speed and stuff. But, having said that, I, you know, I still think that it would be a great project. One of the things I just wish Harry was here because then that way it would be the same group that heard it and voted last time.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've got, we have got, I think, really two issues. I think the subdivision really has one issue.
I can't hear you.
Is that better?
I think the subdivision really has one issue what boils down to it. Lots of different ways of getting to it, but I think the main concern is just the total number of lots. I don't think the pastors have not heard what they've been told because every time they submit, the number of lots keeps going down. Nobody has given them a number. They, I mean, I think that it would be appropriate to approve it for something greater than six lots and less than 27. Where that magic number lies, I'm not sure, but I've heard numbers thrown around as I've attended MAC meetings that said, well, if it was this many lots, I wouldn't, you know, my objection would go away. And, you know, that being said, I think the second issue that we have, and I, again, not exactly sure how to address it, but is the credibility factor with the community plan update. The community has reluctantly been drug into an update of their community plan and it is old and needs it. I think that something we have to be very cognizant of though is, is looking at approving something, running parallel with the community plan update is going to, I think, be detrimental to our credibility and to the community's desire to stay involved. I think the Granite Bay MAC is, if I understand correctly, is probably the most active MAC in the county and best attended or one of them. And I think at some point in time, people are just going to go, why? And, and I think we're going to lose the involvement. I don't necessarily sit back in a MAC meeting and agree 100% with what everybody says, but I do appreciate the fact that there is the community involvement and, and the activity and the people willing to take their time to better their community when they have nothing at stake. And, and so I think we do need to be concerned about that in addition to, we're addressing this. But again, the actual subdivision itself, I think there's good merits to it. I just wish I had the magic number in mind that, that would be, you know, palatable to all sides.
Let me see, I, I guess had the pleasure of watching the community of Forest Hill through 17 years of their general plan. And in Forest Hill, it'd be at a very much larger proposal was handled just the way, you know, some folks here are proposing that it be handled in the general plan. And the problem that came up, and I did sit on the Planning Commission when we did have the final hearing on Forest Hill Community Plan, but my observation of that was this very controversial project that wasn't going to change actually dominated the discussion of the Forest Hill Community Plan and as a result, the community up there overlooked a lot of things that maybe they should have been looking at if they were really going to update their plan. They really ended up pretty much at the same point that they started out at 17 years before. And so, at any rate, there's a danger if, with all the passion that involved in this project, that this project is going to go through the community plan with passion and it might dominate the community's thinking of the future and where the community should be. So, that's just a danger there, not necessarily a criteria for making a decision, but I throw that out as a danger. And, but I do have the sense, you know, this is a well-developed project and I've heard the proponent of the project talk about several things that we're going to provide some benefits in the neighborhood. You know, I think the ability for the kids to follow sidewalks and access the school without trespassing, that's a pretty significant benefit that they'll have an actual safe path to walk to school from the backside of the community there. Another thing, you know, I heard the comment about access from, from Eureka Road, but what I'm seeing here is the developers offering a circular that ties into the existing, existing road system in that community. And wherever you can have circulation in a community for public safety reasons, if, and others, it's a benefit. You know, there's, these little cul-de-sacs, they're nice because they're quiet, but when you have safety needs, fires coming towards the neighborhood or ambulances that you're trying to find their way around and they get stuck on these cul-de-sacs without the circulation, then there's, there's an issue there for them. And so, I think this proposal really does provide some circulation. And I know I drove through the neighborhood and I think part of the problem with the Skyview Lane is that's really the only road there, you know, and, and so for the people in the adjoining neighborhood to the east, you know, they have to go up and around and down that road to get to the school where with this one, they have another access point, be a four-way stop. I presume people will be legal and stop and look when they come to those things. So, at any rate, you know, there's a benefit there. I think the, you know, you look at the wetland and open space, you know, from a lot of the neighborhood there, you see the existing wetland to the east and this is only going to add to that. It'll look like a large open area and you'll see some houses that's granite or on a very dense nature in the background, but for most of the people in the neighborhood, that density, you know, I, at least, you know, I guess I don't know, but it seems to me that density is, is not, not going to be that intrusive. And also, if you look at the adjoining zoning, you know, without the planned development, the zoning that they're applying for and this infill, and it is an infill, is really the same as, exists on two sides of the property already. You know, so here's an opportunity for the community to have some benefits that at least I recognize, I understand that probably in this process and maybe this is the way it's been handled or whatever, it's become a very emotional issue, but, you know, I think it's also important to look at those benefits and the community does have a well-planned proposal before it. You know, I guess, you know, by stalling it for a period of time in the general plan process, you know, I, I just have a sense that you're not going to see a change. This is going to come back and it's going to come back and it's going to come back. And ultimately, you know, I'd be very surprised if in the general plan it's approved or anything different than what's being talked about here today. So, at any rate, you know, I can hear the idea of postponing for a general plan, but I guess I, I'm really struggling with the benefits that that would provide for the community and the property owner. So, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is I, you know, I, I see the passion, I hear the passion, I know the concerns. I've, actually in my neighborhood in Auburn, I've heard some of the same concerns. Somebody offered that, well, maybe we hope that you get a senior neighborhood in your neighborhood. Well, I heard just last week that there's a real possibility that I will get one to consider if it's very close to my house. So, it's, you know, that dream may come true for this planning commissioner, but at any rate, I think it's very important that we do take a serious look at providing for senior housing, a variety of type of housing. So, at least when it comes into my neighborhood as a proposal, I'm going to go into it very open-minded like I hope I did here. So, that's pretty much where I'm at. I think I'm kind of the same place I was last time.
Okay. My, you have any?
Not really. The argument's so con.
I was going to say, there wasn't much that I was going to add to the comments that I already heard. There's plenty of good arguments on both sides, to be honest with you. It's going to come down to what we probably consider would be the best for the community.
Okay, with that, I guess I'm sort of looking for emotion?
All right, I'll move. That we follow staff and deny this.
Okay, with that, I guess I'm sort of looking for a motion.
All right, I'll move. That we file a staff and deny this.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
He said for denial of the project.
Just for clarification for the record, I believe Mr. Minor, or Mr. Gray moved staff's recommendation number two in the staff report, that's page two, that's for denial of the general plan amendment, denial of the rezoning, and consequent denial of the tentative map, and conditional use permit and tree permit.
Correct.
That was the option number two in the staff report on page two.
I'll second. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Setterson.
Yes.
Could a little louder? This is important to us.
Ms., Mr.
How do you guys vote? Would you mind just making it just a little louder so we could all hear you?
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
No.
Mr. Crapp's absent, Mr. Brentlaw's absent, Mr. Denial.
No. So, motion carries three, two.
Just, so just for the record, what the, the motion was, was to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, deny the general plan amendment, and recommend to the Board of Supervisors to deny the rezoning. That will go to the Board of Supervisors for final action. And when it goes up, it will also include a denial of the tentative map based on inconsistency with the, the current zoning. So the whole project will go before the Board of Supervisors under that circumstances.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Can I ask a question? So, this is going to go up without appeal as we?
Because it's a general plan amendment and rezon-
Okay, everybody, please be quiet. If you're going to speak, go out.
It's a general plan amendment and rezoning, and we'll have to talk with the applicant about appealing the tentative map and the conditional use permit, but our objective would be to get it to the board as a, as, as an entire project, so the board can consider the entire project.
Okay. And, and with that, if there's an appeal on this, it should be filed at the Planning Department, and time to file appeals is 10 calendar days, and the appeal fee is $495. Okay, thank you all for coming and your input. We'll take a quick five-minute break.
They're recommending denial to the Board of Supervisors. Yeah, according to...
Thank you.
Okay, Bob. Thanks. Okay, we'll continue with our, I guess it's our final, final item, the 11 o'clock. Yeah. Problem is, is I'm looking for words. Yeah. Yeah. Uh-huh. So.
Here it is, right here.
Okay. We've got a request for continuation. Take it away.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Alex Fish with the Planning Department, and you are correct. The item that we were going to be hearing today, or could possibly still, is a appeal of the zoning administrator's approval of a minor use permit for the Forest Hill Public Safety Facility. And on August 5th, we did receive a written request from the Department of Administrative Services to continue that hearing in order for the department to consider public comments they had received on the project at the August 3rd Forest Hill Forum Meeting. I placed a phone call to the appellant's and received their concurrence with that request, also in writing, which is included in your packet. And it is our recommendation that the Commission continue the request to, I believe, the number two item of the September 10th, 2009 meeting of the Planning Commission at 10:15.
Just before, I do see two people sitting here, and would you like to make a comment on this?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll, why don't you make your comment?
It's not on Granite Bay, right?
No.
No, this is not on Granite Bay. I greatly appreciate your, your going through that two and a half hours, I said here, and you've got more patience than I got, I can tell you. That, that was a tough issue. And on, I represent Iowa Hill, which is an area outside Forest Hill, and I was at the MAC meeting that was discussed with the Planning Department on August 5th, and participated in it. The MAC did not support the appeal. Their decision was not to proceed with the appeal support. There was just a motion made and wasn't even seconded. The, the MAC then withdrew their consideration of the appeal, which meant that, of course, that the MAC wanted us to proceed. I want us to proceed, representing the town of Iowa Hill, which is a very small town in a sense. It's just east, and, well, actually northwest of Forest Hill. We don't have telephones. There is no emergency telephone service in Iowa Hill, and I could tell you stories, and I won't keep a lot of your time, stories about injuries and hurt, and no way to communicate. This tower that's being discussed, that you had said we could go ahead on, is a tower which is a multipurpose tower. And Jerry here could address that issue. There was some concerns in the MAC about its location, and Jerry will probably tell you already that an alternate site has been worked out, which would have satisfied the disagreement to begin with. Without the telephone service, our grant, which is to put the telephones into the telephone company, expires in June. It has expired several times, and now we're told that this is it. And to continue to appeal and to delay this process is, is really hurting us. This tower in multipurpose also serves, there will be dishes on the tower for different purposes. One is for the Iowa Hill telephone, the other is for fire communication, and we're in a rugged country up there. Sometimes the canyons are a thousand feet from the top to the bottom to several major rivers. In fire situations without the tower, they can't communicate. It's important with the fire season approaching that we can, that we proceed and not continue, as was just recommended. I was shocked because the forum did not support this. And the county, I believe, is, is reacting to a letter from one of the MAC members, not even the chairman. So, I'm just asking you to please let us proceed and get this project done because we need it for the community, and we need it for the fire, and we need it for safety. Thank you.
Okay, I, I do have one question, because you, you mentioned that really does it all go away because you have a new site?
I'm sorry?
That the reason for the appeal and stuff is because of the site, that you have a secondary location?
Yes, Jerry did meet right after the MAC meeting, and I would let him discuss that because I know that, I just briefly talked with him before in a break here, and I understand that there is a secondary alternative site that would have satisfied, or would satisfy those people, there were about eight people who were protesting the use of the tower, I mean, the position of the tower. So I would have to refer to Jerry, but yes, there is an alternate site, and evidently it has been approved by the landowner.
Oh, okay, let me ask a question. If something like this comes up where it's alternate, you're, you're not, you, are you aware of this, or is it?
...property that the applicants are, are looking to relocate the, the project on the tower itself. But at this point, we have received a request both from the applicants as well as the appellant's to proceed in further investigating that and, and continuing this item. So there has to be that investigation. A staff report still needs to be prepared with a recommendation and the appropriate findings and the conditions. So, at this point, I don't see any other option than to go ahead and continue this. Now, we're just going to continue until the next hearing, one month away, so.
And it's possible that this could go away and be resolved by then, or?
I mean, we're, we're-
We still have to hear it, though.
We-
You would, well, what would happen is if the, you would have to hear the withdrawal of the appeal. If, if that was, if things were, everything was okay, you would have to hear that, or accept the withdrawal of the appeal. But we're not sure if that's going to happen or not, so we're recommending the continuance, doing the investigation, preparing the staff report with all the information, so you can make an informed decision next time.
I, I guess I have, have one question. If it comes before us where it's a noticed item, I mean, can put it like on a consent type calendar? I mean, if it's approved, or do we have to hear, you know, I mean?
Well, simply because the appeals can file at this point, do you need? Between the applicants and the applicant, hopefully, on September 10th. So the one-month continuance will hopefully allow the parties to come together and proceed before you and ask for the withdrawal and, and proceed with the project.
May? Then one more question, maybe. Otherwise, this project is, is not a project that would normally come before us, or?
No, it would. What this project is, is it is actually an application by the county to get a minor use permit for the placement of this tower. The county does bring these applications forward. The zoning administrator heard it, there was an appeal, and so you're the hearing body. Now, like many other cases, the appellant and the applicant are getting together to try and resolve their appeal. Hopefully, when it comes back in a month, it'll be resolved.
So, so when that's done, then they can go forward with their project?
Correct.
May I respond? Thank you. I appreciate the county wanting to delay this, but the whole process of getting here to begin with was just exactly what we've gone through. We went through a big hearing at the Forest Hill MAC, and the, the MAC said, no, we are not going to approve the appeal. We want this to go ahead, that's the conclusion. And to continue to delay, I see no reason for this, and we're just going to be back here doing it all over again. This project is desperately needed, and I think we should proceed. So, I really thank you for the chance to express my opinion on this, but to represent a lot of people over there as well. Okay? Thank you very much for giving me a chance.
Is, is your grant money that you referred to, if, if there's a 30-day delay, is that in jeopardy during that period?
I would, I can't answer that question. Jerry would have to from the county. My understanding is that, yes, we're, we're on the cusp of, of losing what we've got. That's, that truly is my understanding. And, you know, we get into another month's delay, and then we're going to get into another hearing. We have a few people who are protesting, and, and now we're saying, let's delay it again because they want to, they want to, these people who are protesting want to continue. So I don't think that's right. I think that, that we need to move forward. Okay? Thank you very much.
Oh, did, Kathy didn't catch your name, just say, state your name.
I'm sorry, Don Robinson, and I live in Iowa Hill. There's no, I don't deliver mail there, so it's a PO Box 149.
Give us a call.
Good afternoon. My name is Jerry Gamis. I'm with the Administrative Services Department. We're the applicant. And I just wanted to state that, first off, maybe I should answer your question about the grant deadline. The grant deadline is June 2010. We are up against a very short timeline with construction. However, the continuance is necessary, although Mr. Robinson's comments are accurate, we have come to an agreement with the property owner, but we still need a little time to memorialize that and by, by adding an amendment to our lease agreement for the, for the property, for the new location. So, that's why we're asking for the continuance, so that we can memorialize that amendment between the county and the property owner, and then modify our, modify our application so that we can then come- so that we can then come back to this body to ask for approval. What I will state is that I will host a project meeting with our contractor to see if we can't do some of our other tasks associated with this grant concurrently to getting this approval next month. So I think that we are in really, really good shape, and this is the last and final phase of it, so I think that we can, with certainty, move forward and meet that June 2010 deadline.
I would certainly encourage you to do whatever you can do in anticipation of an approval, so that you continue to move forward.
Yeah, yes, sir. We certainly will.
Okay, good. Thank you. So then I'll move that we continue this item until September 10th at 10:30? 10:15? 10:15. And we got a second, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay.